I call the Dixon County Commission to order the July 21st, 2016 meeting. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one addition to our agenda this morning is to review and consider a letter of support for D-VAC team violence grant. And with that addition, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second it.
Been moved as second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Most in caring. Consent agenda by the minutes of the July 14th work session and regular meeting, abatements of $167.18, wire payments of $17,937.08.
$973. You said $937.
Oh, I'm sorry. $17,973.08 and that was for the card services. And we also had a wire payment for utilities of $9,039.41.
Move with consent agenda.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Most in caring. Commission's comments and committee reports. Craig, do you want to start?
I have nothing.
Okay. Lynn just got a call that he had to attend some personal business this morning, so he's probably will be with us for our meeting today. We did have several things in our work session. Larry Sharp, which is a Cape Camp representative that is our carrier for insurance, was in this morning and went through the insurance plan. We also was looking at our increases in health insurance like the next year that we're with the Blue Cross Blue Shield, the non-employee state plan, and we're going to see unfortunately fairly big increases in that. And also, we've been working on, Janelle was in, and we're going over the budget and we might get into that more during our session here this morning to explain where we're at on that. I did attend, I had the June 1 detention meeting yesterday over Junction City, and as usual, we're still trying to deal with DCF and it seems like it just goes on and on and on. So apparently, we got maybe some legislative people that are trying to help us on that, so maybe we get something down, I don't know. But anyway, that would be all my comments. Presentations and petitions, proclamation, and other public comment, we have none. So Brad, you can go ahead and start.
Okay. Tuesday, we, myself and Larry Goldberg met with David Dilner and Mike Moan from City Badling, City of Andrew and Police Chief, had spent most of the afternoon talking about their potential involvement in the Justice Center. Had a very good meeting. David had to leave in the middle of the afternoon for another commitment, but we were actually here until well after 6:00, meeting and talking about things, so I thought it was a very positive meeting. Lot of ideas exchanged. Larry took advantage of the opportunity with Chief Moan to talk about what he felt their needs would be. At the end of the meeting, it was left that the city would like Larry to do a needs assessment for them. And essentially, it's kind of completed a needs assessment they had already started a couple of years ago. Most of their data's been compiled, and so Larry was going to do that. And he's supposed to be giving us a quote for the cost to do that for the city, and then they would theoretically agree to that and move forward. The question came up as to how much time do they have to look at this and make a final decision. I told them that I felt like it was, to do the needs assessment, Larry thought they could do that one in 30 days. And I felt like 30 days after that point would be more than enough time, given the knowledge that they have and the information they've had all along, that somewhere between 60 and at the very farthest 90 days, we should have an answer, otherwise, on my recommendation, you would be moved forward. So I thought that was more than enough time for them to work with Larry and work with us and determine if they want to be participants in the project or not, so assuming that sounds okay to you guys, right?
It sounds like it.
Any longer than that's going to kind of hold up our project.
Yeah.
And as we all know, we don't want to stop things, but at the same time, we don't want to shut them out. So, all in all, I thought it went really well and very positive. Lot of things, lot of information exchanged. Garrett was there too. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention Sheriff Hoffman, but he participated in the meeting. And every time we meet, we get a good information exchange, so it was very positive. Larry stuck around on Wednesday morning. Originally was going to meet with the judges, but they were tied up, so Andrea was available, so she came over and had two, three hours of good information with her to fine tune some of the stuff in her office. And I think Larry's trip out was very beneficial, so we'll just keep you posted as it goes. But at this point, you know, everything's positive, nothing negative to report. I will tell you that, at the sake of you taking it to heart, Larry's come up with a couple more diagrams. So B and C have changed now, there's an E, and it actually puts it all on one level, as opposed to being stacked, attached to the east side. So there's, through these discussions, there's some other things that are blossoming out of that. And I think I told you early on and made the comment, this is fluid, you know. We may be into Q, R, S, T somewhere between before when we get to a final recommendation to you, but they're looking at all options. And option, what they're calling E, all on one level eliminates several elevators, stairways, that are a substantial amount of money. Bringing the police department and municipal court in, that'll have to be tweaked some more and try to come up with those options, but that's what we're paying them for. So at any rate, I want to tell you that it's, they're continuing to work very hard coming up with ideas and looking at what's in the best interest for us, so.
Was he, was he able to relay? I guess I would like, when we do see these plans, whether they could also furnish a street view, 3D mission view.
Yes, and he said they absolutely can, yes.
Well, I thought they could pretty easily.
Yeah. A 3D rendering of looking at it, yeah.
I guess I'd like to see it, what it would look like from the street.
Yeah. They absolutely can.
And also, if they could also furnish information on, they furnish information on square footage, but they don't, they haven't been, information on the exact dimensions, like if it's 150 long by so-and-so, we get to know that.
I'm not so sure that, that once they come up with their 3D image, that we couldn't have a 3D printer print out the block like the one vendor brought in and have something that we're looking at.
Well, I think it's helpful.
Yeah. Because I know one school that's got a 3D printer that can print that for us, it might be a little costly, but I don't know, Larry's firm has that, but you know, that's pretty easy anymore, but it might be, once we get to a final one that we're really interested in.
Well, yeah, when you get to the final one, I think it'll be helpful to look at that.
But the bottom line is, things are still, you know, and Larry did say, even though that they're working with the city, this doesn't slow them down, working on what they're working on, on us for the jail. They're still working on a lot of stuff in the background, and so, yeah, a lot of information to come, but it's progressing, I believe, very well at this point, so. Just a little update on the roads, and I'll preface my comments with the fact that we all know it's been hot out there, but you don't know hot until you've stood on hot asphalt and hot pavement around trucks. You probably do, you've been there, done that. So you know what those guys are going through at 100 degrees.
For five months.
Yeah. And I got to give kudos to our road guys. They do have, in the last week and a half, they've got Key Road, Oak Road completed from K4 south to the county line as far as chip seal. And they have, at the end of today, barring any complications, they will have Deer Road completed. As of 4:00 yesterday, they had the west lane of Deer Road all the way to the county line, and then they were up to about two miles from K4 and finished it. And they called it quits because it was just, they ran out of oil in the distributor. It's a good time to quit, it was 101 degrees out there, so I think they were just stoked and done for the day, so. But they're doing a good job, things have gone well. Martin's, of course, out running the machine because we're shorthanded, and haven't seen him much, but when I have talked to him, he says things are going well, and we haven't had any breakdowns, knock on wood, so. We're still expecting the Hall Brothers to be here next week to do the mastic seal portion of it, so.
And how many days do you think it will take for them to?
I think, this is my estimation, and Martin hasn't told me, I think they'll do theirs in a day, day and a half.
Really?
Very fast, yeah.
And how many, how many miles we got scheduled for that?
17 or 18.
Yeah, obviously 17. So, but we did get 500 Avenue, which is one of those that gets it prepped, they put a seal code on that, got a leveling code. I think Martin's got all the roads ready for them, and so it'll be really interesting to see how that turns out. And 500 Avenue, of course, links to Oak, so John and I went out and looked at the work yesterday afternoon late, and it'll be interesting to see how that chip seal, where it links into 500 Avenue, we have two roads right next to each other, see how they last, you know, durability wise, in comparison, so. But at any rate, things are progressing that way. The concrete out to landfill is done, all we have to do is backfill along the edge of it. It's been opened up, they opened it up Monday, looks exceptionally well, it's just what we've been after for many years. We're working on a couple of the projects of putting some decent signs out, and then also, we've got what look like stoplights without the yellow, it's a red and green that we bought several years ago, we just didn't get them put up, but getting going in the building that you back into, so we, if it's a red light, you don't go in because the loader is working, and if it's green, you can. We have had one vehicle sometime ago got backed into because they weren't paying attention, didn't see the sign that we set out that says do not enter if loader's moving. So the loader operator will have a remote control in there when he starts working, he can push it and the red lights go on, and people hopefully won't drive into the building until he gets done, and he can push it again, and then the green light comes on, so. Trying to reduce the exposure of the rest there a little bit, and so we've got several projects we're working on out there too, to help fine tune that. We've also contacted a vendor about the new gate, putting a gate up there similar to what we have at the county yard, the electric gate that comes across, as opposed to swinging to and shutting. And so we're going to look and see what that, don't think that'll be too bad, but that's certainly nice to have that, and to not have to worry about beats and pinching fingers and breaking them and not working, and so anyhow. We did get a report from Sherman Township last week that they had a bridge up there, it's an old wooden structure on First Road, just east of 15, that has some problems. Martin went up and it had a hole in it there where he was able to work with the township and get a piece of material down in the hole and they covered it with dirt, but it's most probably going to need to be replaced before the end of the year. So John's working on that to see what we can replace it with, how many tubes it would take versus another structure, looking at the most economical way to get that taken care of with the drainage area that it serves, so. In case you get a report from somebody or somebody comments, and we've got one up there, you know that we're working on that, you're aware of it, so. We did receive a copy of letters from Kansas Department of Health and Environment in regards to the Enterprise Sanitary Sewer Project, coupling in with Detroit Sewer District Number Three. They have given their approval and their kudos to the project, and have also recommended the funding to Department of Commerce for the City of Enterprise, so. They now will apply to Commerce for funding, just like we did the Sewer District Number Three, to do their portion to get up there, so that's a big hurdle that we're past at this point, a positive hurdle that Enterprise has jumped successfully, so. And I sent a copy of that letter to Jennifer Elliott, so she can let the Sewer District Board know and keep them in the loop on that as well, so.
How fast do you think that project could?
Well, it could move rather fast because they're under.
Mandate.
A mandate. They were supposed to have something done by the end of last year, I believe.
Really?
Don't hold me to that, in the letter it says, but they're, they're under the spotlight that, you know, from KDHE, they're going to get something done as soon as possible. I think that's another one of the reasons that KDHE gave approval, they said it shows that you're doing something, we want, because their system right now, Enterprise is out of compliance, and they need to do something quick. I know that Paul's been working on the property, the easement stuff, and he thinks that's going to be rather simple, and he's pretty much got it down, and we're not ready to do construction to get it done, so I don't think it'll take very long.
You see, they already have.
I think it's six months or so.
They have an easement for their water line that comes out, you know, three quarters of the way.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and there's only one other property owner between there and Sewer Lagoons, and of course, it's got to be expanded, he's already talked to that property owner and gotten agreement with them.
He does have an agreement.
Yeah, so he thinks it's, unless something blows up on him, I think he's, I think it's going to be pretty easy and might go fast, so. And sometimes, those are the things that take the longest, is trying to get those property rights secured.
Take longer to get the permission from the railroad to pour underneath that?
Yeah, yeah. So we won't even go there, so. Okay, the last thing that I had has to do with a couple legislative changes. Senate Bill 280 and House Bill 2088, a couple bills that were combined and passed, became law July 1, and they have to do with collection of property, delinquent property taxes. Several years ago, the legislation was passed that prevented someone who has those delinquent property taxes from being able to purchase tags or get a driver's license, with the intent that people, if they want to drive or have a vehicle, they need to get clear on the property taxes. Well, the legislature's gone one step further now, and given counties specifically the authority to withhold payments to vendors if the vendor, the primary or owner of the vendor has any personal property or delinquent property taxes that they owe. So hypothetically, or theoretically, if the Abilene Reflector Chronicle, which we know is owned by Kathy Hegeman, in this case, owed Kathy owns, owes some property taxes for her house, but yet we sent over some stuff and had it published in the paper, and they sent us a bill for that, we can take that money we owe that because she's a primary owner and apply that towards her property taxes before we pay any of that bill. Obviously, that's a.
That's fictitious.
Fictitious.
But that's a good example.
Example, but the example I'm making is twofold. One, we can, we can pay that past due and delinquent tax, and two, the law specifically says that even though it's the Abilene Reflector Chronicle, if we know that Kathy Hegeman's name's not on it, that she's the owner, we can make that connection and assess those. It doesn't have to be in the name of the individual, they just have to be, if we, the law says that we know them to be the owner or a primary benefactor in the business, so. We're working, you know, we've already met between the clerk, the treasurer, and administration, we've talked to Doug about it, we've actually talked to a couple of other counties that are preparing to do it as well, and kind of worked out our processes, if you will, throughout the offices and that whole effect. Our intent is to, should this come up, and I will tell you it's already come up one time this week, when we first started doing it, is to contact the taxpayer as a courtesy and tell them that this is what's going to happen unless you come in and get your delinquent property taxes paid. I think that's as fair as we can be, we don't, I don't want to send anybody into shock and then have them coming in here stomping and, because we didn't pay their business and we applied it without them knowing, but we'll work with them. The one that we had this week that actually came up as we were working on this was very appreciative and said, I will begin to get to taking care of it, something I overlooked, so. I'm optimistic that, I'm not as optimistic as they think that it'll all work out quite that well, but at the same time, I, you know, we want to be fair, we are a service, you know, organization and, but at the same time, you know, everybody's got to pay their taxes, and we all pay them, it's only right that we make sure that everybody else pays them too, so. Just to give you a heads up that that has changed, and I think there'll be a little bit, a little bit of a learning curve there for no one else, but a lot of counties that we can apply that to. The bottom line is, don't let your taxes get delinquent to the point, what is it, three years, Doug, I think, or something? They get past three years when they're actually deemed delinquent, and we, you know, Leah works very well with everybody on making, you know, you can make payments, set up a payment program and what have you, and even when they do get delinquent, I know Doug works with him trying to get it worked out, so there's ample opportunities to get those taken care of, so.
Now Leah will be in charge of taking this, I mean, that will be her responsibility then?
Actually, every department has a little bit of responsibility, but Janelle and I have taken on the responsibility of reviewing a list of delinquents against the list of accounts payable every two weeks, to look and see if we see anything, because the gals have got their statutory requirements, and we didn't want to put any more on the clerk and treasurer. But then if we do see somebody, they'll come back to them, it'll be a form done, it remains to get the form, to see what the form will look like. We'll work with Doug on that, but it'll be something that will come to you as a resolution to do that before anything's done.
Any threshold that they have to, I mean?
There are, there are some time.
Well, I mean, like money, time lines, you know?
There's some timelines that we have to do it within by statute, but as far as amounts and stuff, there are none.
$1 to $10,000.
Yeah. I think we would obviously use some discretion there.
Right, yeah. Well, the only thing is, we use discretion, we want to be consistent.
Yes. We have one, one business that came up on the list of those $2.80, prominent business, and what happens is, they send a check in for their property taxes, takes two or three days to get here, and in that two or three days, it has incurred a couple more dollars worth of delinquent fees and interest, and they don't know about that, and I'm sure if that business was called, they'd say, we'll take care of it, you know. So we have a few like that too, that get thrown into the mix, and maybe we just need to communicate a little bit better and look at those, but we've never really, at least I've never looked at that delinquent list before. Sherry has done a program that we click on, writing the report, takes about two seconds, and he gives us everybody, as of that second, this delinquent, so. And then we can compare that list to the accounts payable.
But you have to know whether that person has a connection with that business.
You do. There's still a human factor involved, absolutely. So if it's somebody that, you know, if I didn't know that Kathy owns a reflector calling for it, I wouldn't put that, I wouldn't connect that relationship, you know, to each other, so. That's kind of funny, yeah, so.
Well, it's a good thing we're a small town, we know these connections.
Well, yeah. And some of us have been around here long enough, there's a lot of names we recognize and people we know, so, good or bad, so.
Well, I think the whole point, and I sometimes don't give legislature credit for some of the things they do, but this, this is actually one that maybe will help us collect delinquent taxes, and like I said, with the program that we've had with Doug the last several years, I think people are becoming more aware of it, that we just can't let it go on forever, delinquent taxes.
Without a doubt, you know, I know from, from talking to one of the school districts, and I think we'll see it when we get our budget kind of phased through the next few months, is that, that delinquency factor that you do at the end of the year, you know, you get your assessed valuation, but there's always that percentage that you've got to take off of it, typically, it's 7% to 10% for people that don't pay their taxes, so you've got to figure that in, because you don't have that revenue coming in. And I know one of the school districts that I just talked to, that factor has shrunk the last couple of years. Now, it involves multiple counties, and they've seen it shrink in multiple counties, but I, there's no doubt in my mind, ours is attributed to being, having an aggressive delinquent tax program, a tax cell program that we didn't always have up until the last six or seven years, so that makes a tremendous difference, so. And a couple percentage points, when you're talking our budget, can be a substantial amount of money, so. Other than that, we just got the D-VAC letter, and I'll go into that when we get to it, but unless you have questions, that's all I got to say. I'll be right in with the reflector Kathy to get her taxes answered.
Kathy, Kathy might not be back. Janelle was in, and like I say, we're still working on the budget, but maybe Brad, you could give some indication of where we think we're going to be at.
I can, yeah. Janelle has worked her heart out and tail off, and all the, all the above, and I will tell you that it has been very difficult, I know it's been difficult, me working with her, every year gets a little bit tougher, and money gets tighter.
And she didn't, working with Janelle's great, it's the process.
It's the process, yeah, yeah. Don't, don't read anything into that. We have, we've continued to see, you know, we've cut in every department, and if anybody doesn't believe that, I would encourage them to give me a call, come in and meet with me, and I'd certainly give them the details. We have cut, we've seen our expenses go up in almost every department, greater than what we're requesting the budget go up by far. We just, this week, learned that our health insurance contribution from the county side is going up 7%. That's a substantial number to us. We had estimated it anywhere from 6% to 10%, so we went far off. But at the end of the day, when the dust clears, at this point, what we've come up with is a one mil increase for the county's budget next year. We had set that as a benchmark, we didn't want to go over that, and quite honestly, how we met that was reducing some of our, we reduced, oh, yesterday, $35,000 out of my department that I'm going to save somewhere, I don't know where, but there'll be some training that won't happen, and there'll be some stuff that won't happen next year, but that's just the way it is. And we've reduced, from day one, we've continued to edge away at the carryover, or what we call our emergency money fund, things like that, the carryover that goes to capital to help purchase tractors, road graders, things like that. We've done that consistently for a number of years, and that fund is slowly declining to help keep our increase minimal. We can only do that so long, and we do that in hopes that the good year will come and we'll be able to replace it. I don't think the good year's ever going to come, I don't think that's realistic. But we have had, you know, we had a small percentage of growth in our assessed valuation, which is very positive. If it would have been the other way around, and it stayed the same or went down, we'd be in, we'd be in trouble. I think we would actually be looking at reducing a couple positions somewhere, I don't know where. And that's where the, where people really realize that the hardships that we're in financially that way is, is when they don't see that service, it's no longer available, so. And that's also in light of the fact that we reduced the Department of Aging position with the vendor's retirement, are not replacing it, but for the most part, we've been able to honor the rest of the requests, some we've reduced for the outside organizations and appropriations, but all those services are very important to somebody, or to a number of people, so. At this point, what we would like to publish is a budget with a one mil increase, and on the hearing date, of course, you can always go down on that some if you'd like, you just can't go up, but we feel like the one mil, even though it is an increase, is necessary, so that's where we're at.
Yeah, I might mention, you know, just our share of the health insurance, it is like half a mil, so.
It's half, $91,000, it's half a mil basically.
So, you know, realistically, just that one item, so, and numerous other things that we hadn't known. that we had no control over have gone up, so.
Rock and asphalt, almost big ticket items. The other thing I would toss out is this, the taxpayers aren't the only one getting hit on this because our health insurance increases are increasing for the employees substantially, on, on their contribution. So what the county pays, of course, is increased in seventy percent. What the employee pays, depending on which plan they have and whether they have a spouse or a family involved, some of them are going up forty percent, and that's an out of pocket, that, that's a hit. That's gonna be much more money than they're gonna get in raise, so, uh, everybody's, everybody's suffering here a little bit, so. But we are still able to function, the best part of it is, we will keep the doors open and the lights on, and we will move forward, so.
Well, like I say, I, I really appreciate all the departments and, and holding budgets as close as they can and, and, uh, like I say, I think we're maybe fortunate, I, I think other counties or municipalities, uh, are struggling too, and to hold it at one, one mil, I think, I think we're very fortunate to be able to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
Craig, did you have any comments?
No, I was just, uh, with the health insurance costs going up, Lauren, thank you.
Okay. Doug, did, did you have anything?
Well, I can go along the line of what Brad was just talking about, about the taxes. We have all the material back now from the title companies, we have prepared the documents to move forward, to file, uh, through the court system to proceed for, uh, ultimately to work towards a, a tax sale for those who did not pay the real estate taxes, so we're in that process right now. And those documents will be circulated between various departments to make certain if we have any additional information on any of those individuals that it be provided to me, and then we're ready to file and start that process.
And you always give them a chance to pay up their taxes before they come to the sale.
They get notice out and they can pay without going through the fee, the, uh, the additional fee of five hundred and forty dollars that they pay up until, I think it's four o'clock the day before, uh, they can still take it after that and it's, uh, over.
And we usually have a number that you, you pay?
Sometimes we do, you know, sometimes we do have some who come in and pay and, and realize that it's a high priority for them.
Well, I know, n- nobody wants to have taxes, but it, like I say, it, it's fair that everybody pays their share if they want the services that come with that, well. Okay, notices and communications, uh. This is, we got a notice from the Eisenhower Legacy Gala, uh, saved a date for October the fifteenth, and, uh, I might leave that with Lynn, Craig, if you want, yeah. And, uh, from KDGE, uh, Randy filed a notice of this, it's, it's meetings that they're, uh, conducting on water and, and waste, uh, water operations, and, uh, it gives the dates and locations that there's, that meeting would be attending. This is from the extension, research and extension of Dixon County, and that's, uh, from the livestock sale committee, and, uh, this is a card if, if you're wanting to see a listing of the animals being sold. And also we've got other information in here of past sales information, uh, at the livestock sales, so I'll just leave that over here too. The county news, uh, from that, the National Association of Counties, uh, also a magazine from the Parks and Rec Business, uh, we also had, we've gotten, uh, this book a few weeks back, uh. Brad, did, did you get a copy of this also?
They sent out the correction letter to them.
Yeah, and so they, they sent a correction letter, um, page four and five, they, they wanted to correct their figures, and, uh, anyway, that, I had a chance, uh, this last week to kind of look through this book. It gives a lot of good information on Dixon Ca- Dixon County trends and, uh, how we compare to other counties in the state, and, like I say, it, it goes from population to evaluations to income and, and, uh, so anyway, I think, but it, it does show that the figures they're giving in this book are from two thousand six to two thousand fourteen, but then they also had it broke down in three categories of years, from two thousand six to two thousand ten, two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, and then the overall. The overall, uh, like I say, in population, we only increased one percent, so we haven't seen that much growth in, in population, but.
I haven't seen much decrease either, that's, I think many, the, the cup half full, they go.
When.
Maybe percent of the counties in Kansas are seeing a decrease.
When you go from here west, uh, it is, uh, like I say, we, we feel fortunate that we're holding our own and increasing a little bit, so. So it, it's not all bad news. Okay, uh. Unfinished business, and then we got other business, uh, the addition to our agenda was, uh, a support letter for D VAC, a teen violence grant. Do you wanna go through that some, Brad?
Yes, uh, D VAC, which is the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas and Salina, applies each year to, uh, uh, the federal government for a teen violence grant, which, uh, what they do is they go into the schools and teach, uh, uh, programs that have to do with teen violence. Uh, we've had a very good response from that, uh, program, they've had very good response, and they are applying again for the upcoming federal fiscal year for that grant, and this is just a support letter, uh, that's not required by any means, but they try to get support letters from all the local entities, cities, counties, and school districts, uh, to send in with their grant application for, uh, that process, so.
And they've consistently been able to get this?
They have been, yeah, they've been successful for several years now, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, sending this letter in support of their grant for domestic violence.
Second.
I'll move to second, is there any more discussion? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Did we cover everything?
I think you've covered all of it, Dave.
Okay, well, anything else?
No, time to adjourn.
I'll second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.